Mine does an asset.
So it's nice to go to Facebook because she keeps coming up like people you may know.
A lot of them have more audio.
I haven't been able, I was in a discussion. She's been on for a while.
And she doesn't, she done a quarter blurbs.
She's like, and on Facebook, you're just stalkers.
Take the.
Yeah, so what, she just keeps coming up like people you may know.
A lot of them have more audio.
It's amazing because it takes, you know, any essential important.
I said, this is amazing.
Thank you.
I should have said, hold you down.
Against sort of everyone. Curly, curly, just like this. Yeah, I haven't been able, I was, I'm next to discussions. So I have to come back and watch the discussion, but like where did you go? You feel comfortable, but I'll, I'll watch the discussion.
I'm just kidding.
All right.
We only did, can't. Can't say where they're at right now.
Whenever, okay. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here and coming a little bit early. What we're going to do today is give a sort of a brief briefing, debriefing of our meeting at the National School Board Association, their national conference, angle conference. Carly's running just a little bit late, but I'm sure we can get started and just as, I just want to let you know, I will have to leave early about two fifteen, so once we get into the transportation piece, I'll probably. Three fifteen, sorry. But it's not two fifteen, three fifteen. Can tell it's been one of those days. About three fifteen and I'll just quietly exit at that point, but if you wouldn't mind taking over at that point, I appreciate it.
Glad to.
So we'll go ahead. Do you'd like to go first?
Well, I was primarily there for ASBSD, representing them, so the only places I went to were, classes that I attended were really on diversity that was more state appropriate. And one of them was really not applicable to us, it was more about getting a diverse population involved in club sports. And we have already taken the extra step to get soccer opened up and we all have other sports for schools, so really I didn't have anything that would be applicable for us here.
Sure, but maybe just as, as a reference, I mean, the work that you do with ASBSD as a delegate, you know, you, you kind of work on policy changes and things like that.
The whole first day was an interesting day of all the policies that we're looking at bringing forward and, and getting over to Washington DC. It was a real interesting trial in parliamentary procedure and standing up for some rights, so pretty much split the United States on a few issues, so we got there. And then as a state, we met as presidents, that was some great activities, just to find out what other places are going through. You almost get more out of that than some of the classes, the collaboration. So, and then again, diversity and workforce were the big, big hot words.
So when you say like diversity, state appropriate, what do you mean?
Well, overall, the big thing right now is trying to make sure you don't have inner city schools that are, it's more about mixing up the population so that everybody benefits. And we're so sparse that it's hard for us to do that. But in some of those tighter areas, they just want to make sure when you build a school in the middle of the city, that you bring all levels of income and people in so that they can work together and it's not the haves and the have nots separated. So that was really interesting.
Any, did you get any ideas from, from that one specifically?
Um, not, not specifically, what I did find out though, that we're pretty much further ahead than most people. We're a pretty progressive state when it comes to how, like I said, we made soccer a club, a school sport, a lot of schools don't have that. And that's how they're trying to get people together, is getting some club sports and having different ethnicities able to come in and play. One big problem is a lot of girls aren't allowed to play, so we're trying to cross that barrier as a, at a national level, so. Yeah, and then a lot of the, the delegate assembly probably won't see any of that until public culture is up.
Legislative session, yeah. Thanks Todd.
You bet.
Mind okay?
Should.
I went to a full afternoon session on Friday, first, okay, before the conference actually, and that afternoon was spent talking about diversity and inclusion and the majority of that time was, was spent discussing how you do that with your teaching staff, which it was a great session, learned a lot, but that really, in my opinion, was kind of outside what a school board member would be involved in. And what I'm planning to do is share the information that I got with Dr. Maher and that can be worked into if there are things that we're not doing, in, in his opinion and administration's opinion, that can then be added as parts of our strategic plan, which of course we're working on. One of the things that I did learn, that the, the program that we started this past year with taking kids down to USD that might be interested in getting into the teaching profession, is something that very few school districts around the country are doing. I think we're definitely ahead of the curve with, with that type of a program. We probably, through no fault of anyone, we're a little behind the curve with our teaching staff reflecting our student population, we've talked about that, we've known that for some time, but I think we're, we're taking a really positive step by getting those students on track for being able to look at a career that they didn't perhaps even know would be available to them, so, you know, that's a good step. And then, like I said, there are more detailed information that I'll, that I'll share with Dr. Maher that I, I think they can choose to use or not use, but it was, it was very worthwhile afternoon, very diverse group in the, in the session. Did a lot of round table group hug things, which I'm not particularly good with, so, you know, I was outside my comfort zone part of the time, so, that, but it was a good session. Went to a session on Education Foundation, which was very interesting. The, the two school districts that were represented, one school district was in the Dallas-Fort Worth area and within their school district is Bell Helicopter, and Bell Helicopter is very, very, very generous with help to the Education Foundation. And the, some of the things that they're doing are, I think, outside the scope of what our foundation will be able to do even once they hire an executive director, but some good ideas, things that I think we could probably at least look at and things that I want to share with the Education Foundation leadership. One of the things that, well, and then the, the other school district that was in there was Bellevue, Washington, which is just outside where Microsoft's headquarters are, and again, Microsoft and the companies that have been spun off because of Microsoft being there are very generous with the Education Foundation. So a lot of the things that were talked about were things that wouldn't really be able to be applied to us. And I think it was the school district in Dallas-Fort Worth, their minimum requirement for each one of the schools in their district is to raise twenty thousand dollars to make as a contribution to the Education Foundation, which I found interesting and probably not reasonable or attainable for us.
Do they have PTAs in addition or PTOs or anything?
When you, when you come into school as a parent, you have, there are two tables set up, one to join the PTA and one to join the Education Foundation, more or less as a requirement, which I felt was a little heavy handed, but it seems to work for the population that they're dealing with. Their, their percentage of kids on free and reduced lunch was a little less than ten percent district wide, so, you know, it wasn't apples to apples, yeah, for what we could do. One of the things that they did that, again, I thought was interesting was their board for their foundation is about a twenty-five person board, and each board member is assigned to one of the schools in the district as a liaison between the, the foundation board and the school district, and they, they kind of moved around who is working with which schools. I thought, you know, that's something to at least be looked at, that might be practical for us, but, you know, again, good session, good ideas, not a ton that I felt we could bring back here and use. And then I went to another session, got in a little bit late, and I think Kate and Brian were both at that one on bond elections, so I'll let you guys talk about that one, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks. Want to go?
Sure. Okay, one of the first ones I attended was on disrupting poverty, turning high poverty schools into high performing schools. And I'd say the two takeaways I got from that, I feel like we're really doing as a district, so that was encouraging to me, that how we are responding to families backgrounds, that's probably one of the most important things we can do as a district, is to make sure we're taking in what's coming to us and making sure we're responding to that, and that we have a fierce determination to overcome barriers by building relationships with the families, not just the student. And, you know, I'm thinking of like our parent universities at Jane, you know, those type of things are things we're already doing, but just being aware and keeping those things going to, that seems to be the key to help move that on to the poverty schools. Next one was on let's stop doing things that do not work and really close the achievement gap, and I went to that one specifically thinking of, you know, like with read, our reading scores, how on our strategic plan. And these were some interesting facts, I thought. At-risk children come to kindergarten with a two to three year achievement gap, which they call the thirty million word gap. And it follows them through life, it doesn't close just because they're in school unless we can do some intervening things. And the, what they were really focusing on, which we can't at this point, but it's something going forward, is quality preschool for all, which we're doing the best we can with the funds we have at this point and in conjunction with Hope Coalition and so forth, but we still have empty, or we have seats, we, or students we can't meet their needs and serve at this time, so that is the way to really help with that reading gap. This one was interesting, I, it was food service management company or fully self-operated food service, and it was just interesting, I just wanted to kind of go and listen to their presentation and see, because I think there's pros and cons on both type, whether, you know, like what we do right now, how we do it, or if we would hire an outside company. You know, the thing I worry about is, I like keeping it local and controlled, you know, having it outside, so they really were talking about how you can still do that and have a local person, and they just are more like a consultant and the employees still stay on our plan, for example, you know, because you don't want to disrupt those type of things, so it was just an interesting input on how to stay within that tight budget constraints that we have and deal with labor shortages, they're, some of the schools are going to more like vending type things to give options, but they still meet the dot, you know, so
Even at the elementary level?
Yeah, and, and that deals with some of the labor shortage too, so that was some of the things, so. The next one, grade to grader, how the best schools keep getting better, and I went to that specifically because I think we're one of the best schools, and how can we keep that standard? And professional development, they really were focusing on that, and word of mouth seems to still be the best way, how teachers seem to get the best resources to improve versus, social media has climbed up or online services are still in like that twenty percent, but both professional development and word of mouth, when they were surveyed, was seventy percent and above was where, where they got their best resources. We can't be too fragmented in our priorities, stick to six or less, which we do as, through our strategic plans, like that, that was great. Really stressed to push writing, it's the most, writing in all classes, it's a more powerful thing that we can do for these kids, is they really focused on writing. We must be more adaptable, the same day or immediate response to things, so when we implement something, they said it's really more important, instead of waiting a year or two years, maybe within the first hundred days to get quicker response and adaptability to any type of plan or action we maybe make within the district.
And can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you mean in terms of feedback?
Feedback, both students.
To students or to teachers from a professional development?
Both, both.
Makes sense.
They said much more, you'll get much more immediate response, and then you can maybe adapt things within the same timeframe, and so I've just like, then it's there. They said math tests in the morning, the first two periods of the day, way better scores, in fact, it's, they've, over and over and over, so when we're looking to do like our, any of our district testing or anything in math, may, we really should focus those first two periods of the day, better scores, we will find. Don't take away recess for punishment. Let's see. It, it was interesting fact, seven, or fifth graders are seventy-five percent engaged in their school, seniors, which of course we know that, is like thirty-four percent, so how can we close that engagement gap and really including them more in more decisions and giving them choice, but yet within a framework? How can we do that to make sure? The extracurriculars that Todd touched on, for activities for all, and they talked about females of poverty and especially immigrant population, how do we maybe get, look at other extracurricular activities or abilities to them, to get them to get, to stay involved in the school, because they say the number of activities has a direct correlation to an improved GPA and attendance in the school.
A couple of years ago, we had a high school principal who actually charted the number of activities that students were in and tried to correlate that to GPA.
Yeah.
I think he's in the room right now.
I was gonna say, I'm not familiar with.
Is this one? Was that his doctor?
Yeah.
And that always make sure that we're not trying to top down from the district and the board to teachers and to staff, that we're engaging them always in our decision-making so that they feel engaged as well. The next session, this one I was really interested in, I actually already sent some stuff to Mike Kristoferson on this a little bit. It's CRA, which is Community Reinvestment Act, which is a banking, I bet he's very familiar with it, regulation that banks must invest so much funding in their communities, it's been used a lot for affordable housing, they're now allowing it for computer and digital technology in poverty areas. And so, obviously, there's going to be pushback from the affordable housing side, because there's only, this is the pie of money that's available in each community.
So the pot hasn't changed.
The pot hasn't changed, but it's, so the people with, from digital technology are saying, just try to go for like the five to ten percent, so you're not taking away that much, and oftentimes, not the full pie is being used, so it's not like you'll be taken away from their pie, but for both digital technology and numeracy literacy, so like econ type courses, those type of things. So I thought that would be something interesting to explore as another funding source for us as a district. And then Full Steam Ahead was a middle school STEM plus arts, so the steam, middle school I thought was interesting. It's in New Hampshire, and this fact was interesting, over eighty percent of the jobs that will exist in 2030, which is our kindergarten class, haven't even been invented yet. So how are we getting these kids eight, prepared to work and be ready for college and so forth? And they were very creative in funding, they got some Dremel grants for 3D printers, I believe, and then they got VR Google cardboards, which are like three dollars, and they had phones donated by community members that they just cleaned up and they use those, and they did field trips to Egypt using these, I mean, for a hundred dollars for a field trip, which, you know, that's nothing, nothing for a field trip, so I just, that, that was really innovative use of type of time and field trip time.
It was a virtual field trip?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And then, oh, this last one. I was hoping this was going to have more information, unfortunately, the type of school was different, but it was called School and Community Collaboration Supporting Education of American Indian Students. And the great program, the issue is they're a true, they're a tribal school, and so they were, it was, you know, some of the ideas were great that we could use, but how they are doing it, because the fundings are coming a lot from the tribe, and since we represent, we have many students from many tribes, it would be a little harder to do that, but it just, if we, you know, looking at maybe establishing a collaborative to reach and cradle, from cradle to graduation of the students and make sure there's not a duplication of services, is basically what their goal was and they did in that community, but once again, would be harder to do in a Sioux Falls versus say West River or something, so.
Great. Anybody, you know, I should have asked, does anybody have any comments or questions yet on any buddies? I mean, feel free to.
I've got one of those Google.
Do you? See, you can donate it to the middle school.
Pretty amazing.
Yeah.
I took that one class from the, in DC for the Ag, Ag whatever. And it was Discovery Channel, and they walked us through what kids will be going through, and it was unbelievable, it blew my mind how cool and what kids can see through this. I'll bring it, let you guys play with it, there's an app that goes with it, it's pretty amazing. Advocacy, thank you. I got it.
All right, Carly, we'll let you go.
All right, so I went to a few different ones. The first one that I'll talk about is talking about reading success and readiness, and there was a school that did some really interesting things, so every fall, they had a pre-registration, and they invited the community, so parents who had four-year-olds to come to their schools, and they did a pre-registration night at the end of September. And so they tried to create an early partnership between parents and the school, and kind of set some expectations on what school was going to be like. They also collected the name, date of birth, and contact information from the students. And then during the year, they held four to six different literacy nights, and they invited the parents and the child to come back. They did, it was in the gym, the cafeteria, they had stations kind of set up all over, dealing with letters, sounds, numbers, vocabulary, people could come to one, they could come to all, they were all different, and they used a program called Teach Me to Read at Home. I'd never heard of it, I tried to do some research on it too, and then there's actually an online version as well, so if people can't come, you could buy a subscription, and people could log in from home or the library or whatever. And then their goal was really to teach parents how to become their child's first teacher. And so I think sometimes that's an intimidating task for parents who are busy and they, they don't know what simple tasks they could do that could really make a difference for their students. And so at the end of kind of that fifth or sixth one, they did like a pre-K assessment using, they used something called DIBELS, which I've heard of before, I don't know if we use that here in our district or not, no?
We used to.
We don't, okay. DIBELS and then Ames Web, was that?
And we, we researched that.
Okay, so those are two of the ones that they mentioned that they use. And then the program has specific modules that are created for engaging parents and being their teachers, and they use these for like the face-to-face sessions with the students and the parents. And then the participating students and families, even those who only attend one session, perform significantly higher on the DIBELS test, and then these children also had a lot less risk over time through their first few years of elementary school, just because of the relationship that was built, their familiarity with school, the expectations, and then the classes that they had attended. So I thought as we looked at some of our, you know, we're looking at enrollment, that might actually give you an idea of some four-year-olds in the community, or just getting them into the schools, even on maybe some of our, not all of our schools, but some of them, might be kind of an interesting concept to, to think about. The next one that I went to was about digital portfolios, and you can see that Deanne pulled something up for me on, on the screen here, and this was really interesting to me, because I had heard of them, but I didn't really necessarily grasp like what it was about, so I came home and I was telling my kids about it, and my daughter was like, I want to do that, that sounds fun, so I'm like, all right, go for it. So if you click on the View My Portfolio button, thanks for driving for me, so this is my daughter who's in eighth grade, and so the, the group that I went to, it was a district from Missouri, and they had about twenty-five thousand students in their district, and they started this in 2016, and they just offered it as, they asked some teachers and some students to just volunteer to participate. And so then they said, okay, here's what we're going to do, we would love for you to create a digital, digital portfolio. And so you'll see across the top where it says elementary school, middle school, high school, so then each tab has all the grades for that, and if you click on the tabs, then the students are asked to select their work that they're most proud of, and so, yeah, if you want to click on sixth grade, Reagan just threw a few things on here, so then you have the four, this organization or this school did it by the four C's, so you have creativity, critical thinking, communication, and collaboration. So students could choose their work from that school year that they felt really exhibited one of those four characteristics. one of those four characteristics. And then they were, the reflection part of it is really what helps the students to learn. So not just, I did this, like my daughter made a map and they used candy to illustrate the different geography and stuff like that. So that was fun, but what she, what I think helped her to learn was to write actually, what did she do and why, and what did she get out of that? And so that's part of the reflective process that they do. And the cool thing about the digital piece of it for me is that you could do pictures if you're a photographer and you love the art side of it. You could post a video of you playing an instrument. You could, if you like to do any sort of multimedia stuff, it really, there's so many options for really displaying what your talents are and you as a student versus you on like, you know, you think about portfolio and you've got all these pieces of paper together and here's all my assignments or whatever. And so to have students go through and actually pick things that they're proud of. And I know even Reagan was looking back at this and she was looking at a poem she wrote in sixth grade and she was just dying laughing, thinking about what she wrote, you know? And that was only two years ago. But to be able to like reflect on how far you've come and really the goal is to see their growth over time. I did some research and I found that a lot of universities are actually having a place on their applications for the student's website. And so they could then provide this to their university or to a job that they were applying to that would show, here's who really I am as a person, more than just who I am on a piece of paper. And it has examples of their work. Now the school in Missouri, they use Google, which I think a lot of people use Google Sites because they're also using Google Classroom. And so it's built right within their K-12 system, so it's private, it's not public. I couldn't go search for a student's information and find all of their work. But the nice thing is, is when a student graduates, they can move that then to their own Google Drive and they, they have access to all of that and they could share it publicly if they decided to do that. So Reagan wanted to put some stuff about Spanish, so she put some of the travel that she's done and then some volunteer work too. So really you can make it, again, this, this district kind of created a template and they pushed it out to all students. And I just was asking Michael if he, you know, if, if that was possible. And he said, yeah, for sure, that's something that we can do within our K-12 system. But that way everyone kind of has the same look, which I think is beneficial, but I think there's also a benefit to letting students be creative and deciding how they want that to be too. The nice thing I thought that this, this district did was that they spent a lot of time and, and the expectation of their teachers was talking about digital citizenship. And it wasn't just like a class that they took, but every teacher who was using this in their classroom talked about the importance of their digital footprint and privacy and online, you know, the maturity that you should have if you're gonna write things and post things and is it appropriate, is it not appropriate? And I think that our kids need that. And so I thought this was a really cool way for students to be able to learn those things, but also apply them. And I think about like the stacks of artwork and the stacks of papers that we probably have of our kids' work. And what a nice way to actually have a collection of it all in one place versus if it's in your office closet like it is in mine. So anyways, thank you, Deanne. Another one I went to that I thought was really interesting was about virtual and augmented reality. And I am really naive when it comes to, like my kids don't play video games, like we just don't do that. And so I can't really tell you that I knew the difference before I went to this class. So virtual reality is that kind of what you guys are talking about, putting on glasses and like experience everything. And augmented is like the Pokemon Go, where you have to have a device to see something. And so this class that I went to, they talked about how they're really trying to utilize augmented reality in school to engage students. And so there's an app that's called Wallyme. And it's really cool because you can take, it's a free app, you can take pictures. And I, I made a really cheesy one, so if you guys wanna use it, you can. But you can download it for free. And you, it's supposed to be that you take a picture of a wall, which is why it's called Wallyme. And so if you were to look at it, you wouldn't see anything until you utilize your camera. So I just printed off. Maybe it's not gonna work. There's nothing discoverable around here. It's got a GPS, so maybe it won't work. I did that work. So anyways, so you hold your, your camera up and you can see things, like if I'm looking at that picture, it looks like a picture on the wall, but when I hold my camera up, I can see whatever it is that I wrote. So I, we were thinking, and I know I talked to Kate about this, like there's some really cool functions of this. If you have, you wanna do a scavenger hunt of things, you could have, you could give students the iPad. And what it is, is they look at their picture and they're like, I know where that wall is, that's down by the gym. And so they head down to the gym, they hold the iPad up and then ask them a question. And they have to answer that question as part of an assignment, or maybe it has a link that they have to go to. And then it tells them where to go next. And so then they go and so it's an interactive, but it's engaging because it's like, I see it, but I don't, you know, like just, it was just a really cool thing. There's another one that's, you have to pay for it, but you could actually embed things like YouTube videos. So you could have a poster and the example I was telling Kate about is you could have a poster in your classroom and maybe it's a poster of the state of South Dakota. And you hold up the, your, your picture and it tells you, oh, there's a YouTube video there, you click it. You can now watch a video about the history of the state of South Dakota or the state burger or this, whatever it is. And so it's a way for, instead of the teacher instructing, them to have different like methods of learning in the classroom. And so I just think it's so exciting to think about how technology is changing. And I know that Chris Martin does some really cool things for our teachers. And so I'm sure that he'll have classes on just a variety of different things that are hot and coming up, so.
Well, it's interesting and you know, it kind of ties with the engagement conversation. You know, how do you, how do we engage these students that are, I mean, technology is changing daily.
Yep.
Hourly, that, you know, this whole augmented reality or even virtual reality, like to be able to go on a virtual field trip or something like that. I think that that, you know, unfortunately, technology isn't going away.
Right.
And it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna have to be quick finding new
Yeah.
ways to engage with our students because it's changing.
Yeah. They expect more because they have access to so much more. And so
Yeah.
if there are free apps and there are free, you know, things that we can utilize, I think, to help teachers, to keep them engaged and to keep teachers engaged too. Cause I know a lot of teachers are excited by new technology and I think just always obviously keeping top of mind the educational component of it so that it's not just a, another game that we play, but there's an end in mind for
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And then one other one that I went to that I thought was really interesting was in New York, it was kind of a co-op district and so they had like sixty thousand students with their, it was pretty widespread. And they did embedded CTE classes. And so they would partner with certain businesses and they would actually create their classroom within that business. So one of the examples that they gave was at like a local news station. And so these students would go to that news station and there were, you know, fifteen of them or whatever, their instructor would go with them. And they helped with all of the broadcasting of a news station, of the news program. And they helped with the cameras, they helped with the editing, they helped with all these different things. It's super hands-on and at the same time, they were earning dual credit for some college courses as well. And they also had, they offered it at a hospital and so they did some CNA type of things. So I think our CTE Academy is amazing. And as we look at kind of our enrollment growth and think, are there ways that we can be creative and look for opportunities within local businesses?
Well, it's internships.
Yes.
And that's, you know, we look at what we're doing with our internships and I think that's.
Yep. So that, to me, I totally agree, those are maybe smaller populations versus a class. There was also a car dealership that built a classroom in their car dealership and they brought mechanics and the people from high school who were interested in that. And they spent their time with a mechanic side by side. And I just thought, wow, what an amazing opportunity for those students as high schoolers to really get their hands dirty, literally sometimes.
Did they have a separate, like, did they have a separate CTE facility?
They did not. It was all embedded in this district, yep.
So kind of the solution they found to
Yep.
to provide those kind of classes.
Exactly, yeah. And they talked a lot about how, and I think we know this too, but how it's so, it's so important if you're gonna create a program like that, that it's not something the district creates and then goes to the business, but that you sit down at that same table and say, what do you need and what do we need? And how can we really combine that to have the best effort and, and help with workforce development and workforce shortages, but also help the needs of our students? And so it was a really cool partnership to see with them too, so, yeah. Overall, and I think you guys had this too, but I learned so much, but I also learned so much about how amazing the things that we have going on in Sioux Falls, like the number of people who would look at us and say, wow, you're, you're doing that in like, in South Dakota? Yes, yes, you know what I mean? So I think as much as we learned, I think we also helped others to learn while we were there. And then it reinforces to ourselves like, wow, we really have done a great job over time to get to our, get our students to where they are right now, so.
I remember, and you know, last year I went to one that was on, it was on an alternate schedule for high school, like starting later. It's like, okay, well, we hear that a lot, you know, it's, people are always like, well, why don't we, why don't we start high school later? So I went thinking, you know, maybe we'll get, because it was a district similar size and, you know, similar demographics. And I go and, well, they start school at seven o'clock in the morning. So that's what they were changing from. So I felt like, okay, we're not in a bad place here. It's all perspective, right?
Yeah.
So, but I would agree, I think we, we realize a lot of the times, like we learn new things and we get new ideas, but we also, you know, realize how great we're doing here. So, okay, well, I'll go. The, I guess I'll talk mainly about, I think I, I didn't get a whole lot of lessons learned from the facility discussion, but this is the one that Kent, Dr. Maher and I were at. But it was Vancouver Public Schools, it's in Washington. Twenty-four thousand students, fifty-two percent free and reduced lunch, so very similar to ours. They had, and yeah, pretty much similar size. You know, what I learned there is that we really are doing the right thing with all of our discussions that we've been having. You know, they kind of talked about this eighteen-month engagement process. And I thought that was interesting, I'm like, that's really long. But then when I really think about how long we've been talking about this, it's probably been about that long. You know, they, they talked about future-ready, flexible learning environments. Again, I think we have that with our specialty programs, New Tech High, CTE, you know, we've, we're, we're kind of there already. I think one of the things I learned and, you know, they really branded it. They, they branded that conversation, which, you know, something that the task force can figure out once we get to that, that point. But they had a, I don't think I even wrote this down. Do you remember how much their bond was for? It was like four hundred million?
It was over four hundred million.
Yeah. I, I missed that one piece in my notes.
I think it was four hundred and seventy million is what sticks.
Four hundred and seventy million, so.
That's what sticks in my head, but.
You know, they were, you know, they had eight replacement schools, three new schools, so they were
In need.
In need, yeah. So, so a little bit different from us. You know, they talked about master, master facilities plan and we've talked about that too. You know, I think we really have that with what Jeff Kreider keeps together in his, in his big binder. You know, one thing I, I thought was a good idea, and I don't know if we've talked about this yet with the task force, was doing like facilities tour. You know, really walking through the buildings and showing them what it's like, you know, what does Whittier really look like with the eighteen different levels? What does Cleveland look like? I thought that was a good idea. And then they did a, they did a school taxes, or no, they didn't, but this was the idea I had, School Taxes 101. I think, you know, we can talk about finance and budget and meetings and things like that, but even if we just did like a School Taxes 101, you know, what's opt-out versus a bond issue? I think, you know, would be a, would be a good idea. I don't know. Did you get any other takeaways, Brian? Or you don't have to share?
No, I will. As I was listening, first of all, I know the superintendent there, so I went thinking he was going to be there, but it was three board, three board members, four board members?
Board members and I think their, the architect group that was overseeing the project.
So what I was really focused in on is what were we doing the same? Or what were we doing that's really different? And one of the things that I noticed was, again, I had written down twenty-four thousand students, four hundred-plus million dollar bond. But as I was looking at their process and their, their process focused on community engagement and it focused on a task force. It focused on a board decision and then ultimately election day. And I thought, that sounds really familiar. Really, it's the, from a process standpoint, I think it's really the same thing that we're looking at doing. It was a funnel approach to take, taking a whole lot of ideas and ultimately bringing those ideas down to the scope of a project. And the other thing that I took away from them that I thought they were really successful at, and I think we are in the stages of being successful at, and that is really focused on listening to what the community's telling us in terms of what do we need facilities-wise? So I saw a whole lot of similarities. I walked out of there thinking, we're on the right track, at least from a process standpoint. Who knows what the scope will look like? Who knows what an election will look like? But from a process standpoint, I thought we were very, very similar.
Yeah. And what I wrote down, authentic conversation, you know, the community has to know that they're being listened to. And I, I, in my opinion, I believe we're doing that right now, so. I attended another facilities, facilities plan. I, it was presented by a similar group that I went and saw last year. So like the presentation looks really different, but it's actually a different school district. So, I mean, just, just some ideas there that they used to really get the community to understand what the need was and why there was a need. I thought this was an interesting graphic that they put up is, they would put up the, the blueprint of a school. And then with all the different additions, what they would do is put the face of whichever president was president at that time. So it's sort of like this timeline of how, you know, you look at some of our older schools like Lincoln, you know, and with certain additions or, you know, even like HVAC systems, like how old is the HVAC system? So I thought that was, it was just, yeah, a good visual.
Whittier would be Grover Cleveland probably.
Right. So, and I, I, yeah, I think just really, you know, making sure you go to the community with what you need is important. Let's see. Community partnerships. Oh, this was a sim, this was the Cherokee students. Cynthia and I were both at that one. I think there were some good ideas there, just how to, again, engage not just students, but parents too. As you can tell, I went to a lot of facilities discussions, make sure I was prepared. Oh, one was, one was about a school that, and I didn't write down the session names, but, and I thought there were really good thoughts from this one. So there's a school district that went from, that added thirty-one days to their calendar. Down in Kansas City, North Kansas City, I've talked to Dr. Maher about this. They added thirty-one days, so a total of two hundred and eight day, two hundred and eight days, call it an extended school year, not year-round school. So essentially what they did was added thirty-one days to the front end of the school year. So the kids go to school in July and I meant to print off it. Oh, wait, I do have the calendar. They started school in June. First day of school was in June and they took a week off over the fourth and then, and then three weeks, and then they were done by the end of July. So basically three weeks in June and then three weeks in July. And then they had about a two and a half, three-week break before school started again on August fifteenth. And what they, again, similar district in size, I believe, or at least close. And what they did was they took two schools, close in proximity. They chose one school for the extended program and allowed parents and students to either, they only did opt-out and teachers too, you could opt-out. They were debating on whether to allow for opt-in when, when they came and presented. So they weren't doing that yet. So they had a school where you could opt-out. If you opted out, then you could attend that sort of neighbor, that other neighborhood. that other neighborhood school. And I think they bussed the kids to that school if they chose to opt-out. So I just thought it was a really interesting, um, you know, when we talk about what we're doing with Summer Klein, I mean, it's very similar. We're sort of adding six weeks or so. Is that, Summer Klein's about six weeks? And, you know, really front, front-loading their learning at the beginning of the year. So they're fairly caught up with their peers when school actually starts in August. So I thought that was, um, it was a good session. One thing with that though is the finance part of it. They were able to get state, um, funding for it because they are based on the, um, is it greater average daily?
Average daily membership.
Yep. Average daily attendance. Um, and the state paid for the extra days, so. They were at, at an advantage that way, I think. Um, and they did obviously increase teacher pay. So those teachers that did opt-in to that, they, um, gave them about a six to twelve thousand dollar increase on their salary.
Did they say like how many, did they have a lot of people that opted in or that didn't opt-out?
They did. And I, I meant to print off the slides from this one, um, but I didn't. They did have, um, so they had some question marks for, for themselves in order to determine whether they're going to expand it. And like I said, maybe allow the students now to opt into the program. Cause they did say they, they lost twenty-three percent of the students, students opted out after three years. So you lost, you lost a lot. Only seven percent after the first year.
Was it a particular grade level?
It was all elementary.
It was all elementary?
Yep. Yep. K, I think it was K-12. Or yeah, K-5, sorry. And I don't, I don't know if it was pre-K or not, but I think it was just K-5. So, um, yeah, so I just, I, other than the facilities discussion, that was probably my next favorite session. It seemed like a, it made sense to, um, you know, especially when we look at some of our students.
Did they, did they talk about any achievement results? Are they seeing anything from an achievement perspective?
Um, they were only.
Honestly, when I, when I sit here, I think we're, we're eight weeks in Summer Klein, aren't we?
Eight weeks.
We're eight, we're eight weeks and we're four days a week. So we're at thirty-two days.
Mm-hmm.
So it's really similar. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering what their delivery system is. I'm wondering what outcomes they're seeing.
Yep.
Might be somebody for us to follow up with.
So they did say, um, KU did a third-party research, um, they, or they had KU do a third-party research. So I was going to go back on or I could certainly.
What was that?
The Jayhawks. You know, the, the school that plays basketball?
Cause they can't play football.
So they did a third-party study of the results?
Well, and I, they would, they did something because if I recall, this was a still, it's still a fairly new program.
Yeah.
Like they were two, well, actually they were three years into it. So they only had three years.
And we're still, and we're doing, I know, uh, Dr. Boyson and Mr. Morrison, I know we're, we're still doing a lot of information gathering too to see how effective our program is, so that might be.
I can get, I can get the details from the session and get it to you.
North Kansas City.
Yep. There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, I thought that was, it was good. And that's.
You know, I hear everybody giving their reports and talking about how great we feel and we are. And I know a year ago you two had talked about it and maybe it's something we should think about. One of the number of good things that we do here, maybe it's our turn to do a, a presentation and, and show off not only South Dakota, but Sioux Falls a little bit. And I know they'd love to hear from us, so. We can talk about that at some point.
Summer Klein, I mean, Summer Klein would be.
Be glad to watch and put our name in for that. I know what you're thinking over there and I, I would not volunteer for the, doing that.
You could moderate it.
I would just have you do that.
It seems like the deadline is August.
It's early. We actually, when I was at Carney, we actually presented, I think, three years when I was there. And it's a, it's an early turnaround. So maybe I could work with Deanne. Is she still, maybe I could work with Deanne and see what that submission would be like and, oh, maybe think through some topics or would love to hear some topics and maybe.
I think it'd be an opportunity to show her, show us off a little bit.
Yep.
So, I mean, we obviously have our challenges, but I think we're doing some really great things, so. And we learn, you know, what's great about this conference is we learn a lot and then we can come back and discuss and
picking pieces of stuff that we, you know, like you don't have to replicate what the entire thing of what somebody else did, but just saying, well, like you said, Kent, for the education foundation, this seems like it would make sense. We have twenty-five people on our board. Let's get twenty-five people, you know what I mean? So I feel like there's little pieces that can really make a big difference when combined with some of the things that are, we're already doing. Our practices already, so.
So, okay.
At our next work session, maybe we should do a critique of Terry Bradshaw's speech.
I think we leave that alone.
Okay. Consensus is we don't do that? Okay, that's fine. I'm good with that.
Or we could start ranking the keynote speakers.
He'd be three. Out of three.
All right, anyway, moving along. Um, let's go into committee's side reports.
Path meets next week. Calendar, we voted on, um, last meeting. Workforce development, we had a lively discussion. Take a picture of our, all the stuff we came up with. Cause anyway, I was never going to remember all of them, things hanging on the wall. We were trying to really talk about, um, what programs exist right now in the community for workforce development and what are their purposes and what are we hoping to achieve? And what do we want to maintain by coming up with some master plan and what do we want to avoid? So it was a really good conversation from people from all sorts of different places, um, saying, we want to avoid this and we want to make sure that we keep doing this because this is working. And, um, you can see my picture, we had like long sheets of paper hanging, ever, we were writing, writing, writing. And, um, it was very interesting conversation and I think that it's going to continue into next month as well. We're kind of getting to the, I don't want to say the end, but the final stages maybe of, um, determining what the group, what the group's recommendation is going to be to forward to Falls. And then I think our next step will be deciding where do we fit in? Cause that's kind of been the, this committee has kind of been ever-changing for the last year. Right now, I think we're the fake tank and we're kind of digesting all these ideas to give to somebody else that's then going to really take them and run with them. And so then we'll have to decide where do we fit after that, so. That was workforce development. Policy, we have some policies out, um, for, uh, review right now. I don't know that, that we've gotten any feedback. But that's, yeah, that's it for me.
Affordable housing, um, no change since last. I'm hoping now that the mayor election's over, there are four open seats on there.
So I, those will be filled. So then we for sure will have a quorum and we can start doing some action again.
Sioux Falls Education Foundation, uh, we're handing out this year fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in grants, which is a huge jump. One reason Sanford, uh, came forward to sponsor a seven thousand five hundred dollar simulator mannequin for like healthcare practices. So, um, it's a fifty thousand, which we thought we were going to do, we did fifty-seven five hundred. We're also working on two other grant requests totaling about thirty-six thousand dollars, so we're waiting to hear on those. The breakfast for the new teachers is going to be August ninth at the Downtown Holiday Inn. We'll begin reviewing applications for the executive director, May fourteenth, I think, if we, yep. And the teacher swap meet will be July twenty-seventh. So that's a good things there. Insurance, they canceled. Um, I emailed, uh, Principal Conrad to see if there were anything and he, I hadn't heard back from him by the time, if there's any meeting. And then you hit calendars. That's it for me.
Um, insurance committee is tomorrow, right?
Yeah, reschedule. The one was canceled from the nineteenth, yeah, yeah.
And so I think we have one tomorrow. There's been no PTA. And then, uh, sports authority, they just, uh, put another bid out for Division One Women's Basketball for twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. So we got a lot of bids out waiting to hear. We're just a little shy on hotels. We've been shut down a couple of times, but I think we're going to eventually get there. And we've got the big PGA classic golf that starts in September. We'll run for five years. That's all I got.
Safe, secure schools. We had our meeting a couple of weeks ago. Bob Bray does just such a great job and he works so closely with the SROs and, well, Fire Department, the Minnehaha County Emergency Management, they just do terrific work. And, um, they change as our school populations change, as we need, you know, we need to make changes, they're made. I always hate to give the safe, secure schools report because I typically say there's so much of what's done there that we just can't share publicly because if we have an active shooter situation, if we have any of those things, the more we share, the more the people that might be the bad guys, the more information they have. So just suffice it to say, say that Bob is more than earning his money and the, the partnerships that we have with the city and the county work so well together. One of the things that was brought up was the possibility of doing some, um, bleeding, uh, a couple of docs were there, how if you do a, teach people how to do tourniquets and all of that kind of stuff, how many lives you can save, the, so many people that die, whether it's in an active shooter situation or an accident that happens in a school, a, a lot of people that lose their lives are just simply because they bleed to death and nobody knows how to put tourniquets on. And I know Deanne was there. We discussed what, what our process would need to be going through curriculum committee and, and all of that. Don't know where we're at with that, but.
Um, just in relationship, I, after hearing that, I presented that, um, as an option, a learning, a teacher swap meet. And they have, um, they are taking us up on that. They're going to offer that training out of teacher swap meet. A couple of different times they have, um, the required trainers out there. People can sign up and they can also show up and participate in that training. It's about a thirty to forty-five minute lesson. So, um, happen to have education or the swap meet meeting just after the safe and secure school. So that's, um, a great target audience for, um, people from throughout the states.
Good. Great. Thank you. Uh, budget committee, we're done with our work and just waiting for our July meeting for final approval on that. Uh, Southeast Tech is in, uh, getting toward the end of their budget process. They will be, uh, giving a report to us at our meeting in May the fourteenth, I think is that date. Things are looking good out there. Enrollment still, uh, is up for this semester. The initial numbers for fall look good, so the budget should not be as dicey as it has been, uh, some in the past. So I, I do feel good that they're, uh, getting things turned around. As I've said many, many times, uh, Bob Griggs and that administrative team out there are working very, very well together and working hard and smart. And, uh, that's just really great to see, um, that, uh, that things are slowly beginning to, uh, look much better out there. STI graduation is Friday at five. Yep. At, at the arena, so, uh, Todd and I'll be there. I don't know who else, uh, is, but, uh, we'll try and represent the board appropriately as best we can.
Bobby has a play, otherwise I would be there. So please be appropriate.
I will.
I kind of cringe a little when you said that.
That's all I've got.
Um, I don't, I was out of town for the last Head Start meeting, so I missed that. And policy, Carly covered, budget, Kent covered. Um, I don't think I have anything else, so. I think we're good. And look at that, nearly right on time.
Nearly?
Nearly.
You're in, you're in good shape. Are you ready?
I, I think so, yeah. I'm just going to do this.
Do you want me to start?
Please.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll move into the portion of the meeting that talks about transportation services. Um, at a, at a one-on-one meeting earlier this year, uh, one of the board members said to me, you know, I'd like to have a big picture view of transportation services. I can tell you I've had an opportunity to preview the PowerPoint. And it is a big picture perspective of our transportation services because it's a, it's a complex, uh, issue. I think you're in for, um, a lot, a lot of information. Um, hopefully we'll have time, not only to present, but to give you time to ask questions. Uh, I've worked with Mr. Veek and he went to his expert, Missy Brock. And so I think that, uh, I'll just turn it over to, to Todd and, and we'll answer all questions transportation.
Thank you. Yeah, Missy, uh, is our transportation supervisor and they do tremendous work out there and it's a lot of work. So she's going to walk us through the PowerPoint and then we'll take questions. So I'll turn it over to Missy.
Hi. Um, the district has about twenty-four thousand students. Of those eighty-two hundred are transported either by bus or by cab each day. Peggy Dice is our transportation specialist and she works closely with the schools, um, with our contractor, school busing and Yellow Cab to make sure that our students are getting transported to school each day. We've had, um, Peggy has been with the district, I think, close to probably twenty-five years. And in that time, we've worked with, uh, school busing since nineteen seventy-nine, I believe is, is how long we've worked with them. Uh, Yellow Cab, it's, it's been a, a while. I don't know the exact date. Um, it precedes me from twenty-eleven. So I, I know it's been a while that we have worked with Yellow Cab as well.
Will you be talking later about why we use Yellow Cab?
Yes.
Okay.
I will.
Thanks.
Um, I'm going to start with school busing because the majority of our students are transported by bus each day. It's about eighty-one hundred students that we're transporting. So it takes a rather large team to make sure that that's done each day. And school bus employs about a hundred and seventy-five employees. That includes their drivers, their bus aides, mechanics, um, their office staff. In order to keep the drivers and the aides, they offer incentives, which include, uh, safe driving bonuses and attendance incentives. They're still short-staffed for busing, for bus drivers. And so their office staff has stepped in. Uh, the owner of the company is even driving the bus right now. So there, there's definitely a need out there yet for drivers. In their fleet, they have a hundred and one yellow school buses that they use to do three hundred and fifty-eight routes each day. The other thing that will happen is at the beginning of the school year, the drivers and the aides are provided training. Debs staff goes out there each year. Um, I believe we had two, two days of training. And in that training, um, we, we talk about behavior and social skills. We had an autism training, uh, back in January. We had a parent who, uh, was, who voiced their concern that maybe we need some education with autistic children. And so Brenda Bernard worked with us and arranged for training for that. And I know that the, uh, drivers and the aides were very appreciative of receiving that training. The insight that they. of receiving that training. The insight that they were given, I think, will definitely benefit the drivers and aides as well as the students. We work with them on safety. We wanna make sure that our kids are getting to school every day, ready to learn. And so one of those things that we do is with our first graders and our kindergarteners, they may not necessarily know their neighborhood and what stop they need to get off. So our drivers and our aides do a checkoff sheet with our first, first graders and our kindergarten students. During the first couple of weeks, they'll work with them, they'll work with the school to make sure that they're getting to, getting home every day. The other thing that we do is three evacuation drills each year. What will happen is they will work with the schools, the staff there, the, the principal there. They will do an evacuation. They'll go through, you know, instructions that the students are supposed to follow. And they have to do that three times a year. Head Start requires evacuation drills to be done three times a year. So that's one thing that we do to make sure we're in compliance with Head Start. The other thing that we do is we have cameras on the bus. We don't have cameras on every single bus, but we have cameras on a lot of the buses. And the reason why we do that is if the public, if a student, if a driver, if an aide reports a safety concern or behavior issues, then we have that capability to go back and investigate that incident. This time of year, we, we oftentimes will hear from the public that they see a bus where a child might be throwing something out of the bus. We have the ability to go in and investigate that. Every single school in our district has a bus boundary. Have they, they have busing provided, whether it's RISE, regular education, early childhood, we have our ELL programs. Every school has bus service of some sort. At the elementary level, the regular education, there's eighteen sites that we provide busing. And all five of our middle schools, we provide busing there. We have two schools in our district that are an entire bus school, and that's McGovern Middle School and Renberg. Based on where they're at, right now McGovern is out in the middle of nowhere, so to speak, without a change. And same thing with Renberg. We have very large areas that we cover. This, this section right here is McGovern. Do you have, oh, flip it over. Oh, you don't have the Renberg one on. Okay. Renberg is, is virtually the same, but it goes up north yet. So those routes tend to be a little bit longer just because of the, the, the size of the boundary. And I alluded to that we have RISE, ELL and early childhood boundaries as well. So we work with Deb's team. We work with Demi Loon and Anne Smith on the ELL sites. And when we determine what the boundaries are, we look at a couple of different things. We look at the safety of the students. We look at natural borders. So the interstate, there might be railroad tracks, rivers, that kind of stuff. And then, of course, we look at the budget. So we, we added, this past year, we added a section down in John Harris. That area was, uh, one point seven miles or so away from the school. And I believe that there were some attendance issues trying to get those students to school. We did that a few years ago with a pocket we went to where attendance was an issue. And so we evaluated that and looked at our budget and added that as a route to Hayward a few years ago as well. Our early childhood sites are Garfield, Lowell, LBA, Terry Redlin, Hawthorne, Hayward, Ann Sullivan, Cleveland, Pettigrew, Harvey Dunn, and Robert Frost. We have a lot. And those are set up so that we have some that are, we call our early sites, and some that are called our late sites. And we, we do that in order to provide the busing services and, and try to do that the most economical way we can. And so we have some sites that, that will run later so we can double run. And what I mean by double run is, so for example, Garfield might be an early site and Lowell might be a late site. They can, they can run the Garfield route first and then run the Lowell route. We save money by doing that. And so we work together with Deb's team to try and get that arranged so we can do as many double runs as possible. The other thing that we have is our ELL, our English and second language sites. I won't read through all of those. Those are listed up there. But all of our middle and high schools have those as well. And then we have the immersion site. And the immersion sites are students that are just coming to us that have very limited language, English language. And so we have Jane Adams for our elementary and then McGovern and Whittier. And the McGovern boundary and the Jane Adams boundary are very large. So those bus routes tend to be a little bit longer. They tend to be an hour. Sometimes they might be a little bit over that, depending on where the students are located. And then we have the RISE sites. We have three sites that we bus students to if they have an IEP that, that they have transportation as a related service. And those are Susan B. Anthony, JFK, Terry Redlin for our elementary. And then we have McGovern and Patrick Henry for our middle schools and then all three high schools. So when you're looking at those, we have feeder schools that go into each one of those, elementary and then McGovern and Patrick Henry also have feeder schools that we provide busing in their boundaries as well. So again, that, those boundaries are larger and so the, the routes can be a little bit longer. We try not to have the routes over an hour. I believe that there are times when it does go over an hour, especially with the McGovern area. The students that are, are eligible for transportation are the K through eight students that live in the designated bus zones. This, the hatch crossover here indicates bus zones. These are the middle school. And then we have our elementary. So there are certain ones that don't have a bus boundary. Terry Redlin doesn't have one. Ann Sullivan doesn't have one. There's, there's very few that don't have bus boundaries, but when you look at this, we base it on, you know, if you look over here, we added Oscar House a few years ago because Marion Road is expanding and it's not safe for our students to cross there. You, you deal with the path committee and so we try to find safe routes for students. And if there aren't any, then we have to look at, do we need to provide busing? Students that are in special education, that have transportation as a related service, they're also eligible for busing. And then we also have students that are, that participate in our fee based on transportation. They're eligible. And then our prepaid students are also eligible for transportation. So at our elementary level, we have ninety routes that transport almost three thousand students. And this includes our ELL students. Then we have fourteen of those fourteen routes that transport sixty-four students for our special education to our RISE sites. So that was Susan B. Anthony, JFK and Terry Redlin. And then we have seventy-four routes that transport our early childhood, so our Head Start students to the eleven elementary sites, sites we talked about earlier. On the RISE and the preschool buses, they all have bus aides. With the RISE sites, there may be students that are in wheelchairs. So then the bus aides will, will help secure them on the bus. All of our preschool students are put into what we call star seats. And so our aides will make sure that they're, they're buckled in for the ride to and from school. We have, Deb, did we implement three years ago the bus waiver form?
Yes.
We have a bus waiver form that we have parents sign stating, is it okay if they get off the bus without a guardian or parent there to receive them? If they want somebody there to receive them, they also have a form that they fill out saying, these are the acceptable people. That's typically at our, our middle and high schools that we have where we give them a bus waiver that they can get off on their own without any supervision. Our elementary and our early childhood students, typically we have somebody sign for them. So our bus aides are getting off the bus with the student and they, the parent or the guardian or whoever is authorized to sign for them has to show an ID. And then they have to sign the form saying they received the child. At our middle school level, we have all five middle schools that may have transportation provided, which is eighty-six routes and about thirty-two hundred students. So our, our boundary for our middle school is a little bit larger, obviously, because we have fewer. So we have, we also have larger, what we call walk zones at the middle school level. We try to keep that at about the same one point seven miles or less for a walk zone. At the middle school RISE sites, there's fourteen routes that transport seventy-three students. Those, those routes also have a bus aide on them. We have at the, at McGovern, we do have some bus aides, even though it's regular ed, we found that it's beneficial to have bus aides riding those routes as well. So. At the high school level, we have the RISE sites. All three of them have the special ed program there. And so there's sixteen routes that transport eighty-nine students. Couple of years ago, we worked with the city. They used to provide our tripper and our pusher buses. Because of budget cuts and concerns, we ended up taking over those. And we, Todd, do you want a handout? So we have, we have, Washington has one tripper bus. Lincoln High School has a tripper bus. And Roosevelt has two tripper buses. Roosevelt's boundary is a little bit larger. And so we, we have two tripper buses and of course, there's more students at Roosevelt. We are actually looking at the possibility of needing a third tripper route at Roosevelt because our numbers on those buses are, they're pretty full. So in order to accommodate all those students and not have buses that's overcrowded, we're looking at that possibility as well. So what you're looking at here is an example of the routes that the students have, they have the option to get on a bus there. We treat this much like you would treat a city bus. We don't have students assigned to the routes. We have specific stops that we go to throughout the district. And students are given a bus pass each month. They, the bus passes are thirty dollars apiece. We do subsidize solo homeless ed, Indian ed, free and reduced. We have discounted bus passes. So this is kinda what they look like each month. We, we change them each month and has the dates listed on there as well. And then we talked a little bit about having CTE and New Tech. I heard you guys talking a little bit about those programs. In order for our students to get there, we also transport them from their home school. So we have, in the morning, we have buses that come from all three high schools that will drop students off at CTE and New Tech. And then also throughout the day, we have students that are transported from those three high schools to CTE for blocks one, two, and three. Students have the option, if they wanna drive out there, they can do that. But we have a lot of them that choose the, the bus.
What's the difference between a tripper and a pusher?
Thank you. A pusher is at Washington and Lincoln only. And it goes from the school to the bus depot downtown and from the bus depot to the school.
Okay.
So what will happen are some students that maybe go to Washington High School might live in Roosevelt's boundary. So they'll go down to the depot and hop on another city bus that will take them to the west side of town.
Thank you.
We have the other programs that we have that we bus students to are our behavior programs. This is all district-wide. So we have Horseman Bridges. We have an entire district that we cover with four buses. When I say eight routes, what I count as a route is the morning is one, the afternoon is another. So there's four buses that are transporting about a hundred kids per horse man each day. Then we have six routes or three buses that transport fifty-four students to Axteau Building in Summit Oaks. We take those, those students typically ride, they ride the bus together. Kids are dropped off at Axteau and then taken over to Summit Oaks afterwards. And then at the end of the day from Summit Oaks, then we go pick up the Axteau students. It saves us a bus by doing that. And these bus routes all had bus aides on them as well. With the Horseman bus, this year, Deb, was it this year?
Our second year.
It's our second year that we have a teacher or a staff member that rides the bus. And what they're doing is before the student gets on the bus, they're inspecting their backpack, pockets, that kind of stuff to make sure that they're not bringing anything to school that they shouldn't be. So, and that's, I think that has been very successful in, you know, preventing some things coming to school that shouldn't be coming to school.
And I think the presence of someone that knows the expectations during the day on the bus.
Yes.
Has helped with some behavior issues in the ride. So I think we've gotten a double win in that decision.
Yeah, very much.
The aides on the buses are school bus Inc. employees, not district?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. So, so Horseman also has, they have a bus aide plus a school district employee on there. And their bus incident reports, and I'll get to that a little bit, in a little bit, but their bus incident reports have gone down. And what a bus incident report is, is if there's behavior issues on the bus, the bus driver or the bus aide will report that. And those have gone down, and I believe that's because of the presence of, of staff or, you know, somebody else on the bus besides the bus driver, just the bus driver.
Does that staff member rotate? Like, do teachers sign up for that for a week at a time or do you know?
It's mainly specialist staff.
Okay.
And it's assigned in their schedule, but one person can't do all ten.
Sure.
Runs and stay within there. So we schedule. So we schedule stagger.
They do the same thing now at McGovern. They'll have district staff out there as well who volunteer to ride the bus and if it takes as long. All right, on to our immersion bus routes. Jane Addams in McGovern. At Jane Addams, there's a hundred and thirty-eight students that we transport throughout the district on six routes. And then twenty-two are transported to McGovern on two routes. I know we have, at McGovern, we have some students that are clear on the southeast part of town. So it's a rather long ride for them, but that definitely would put that, just because of the length of time, where it's going from the northwest down to the southeast, it takes time to get down there and there's other students that are riding the bus with them. So unfortunately, that is a rather long route. We have Children's Home Society and Lifescape bus routes. Right now, we have eight students that are transported to Children's Home Society and to Lifescape. We will utilize, said that?
Will we be able to get a copy?
Yes, yep, I can send that to you. We do utilize cab if our numbers fall below four to Children's Home Society. We don't typically with Lifescape. Lifescape, we bus them, but when we get down to that number, that four, it's more economical for us to transport them via cab. Then we have our specialized schools fee busing. Carly, I know you're familiar with it, Kate's familiar with it. That includes All City, Challenge Center at Robert Frost, Eugene Field, and Sonia Sogoyor. And then Edison is our middle school honors and immersion program. We're in the process right now of taking registrations for the fall. But right now, this semester, we have a hundred and ninety-six students at the elementary level that are utilizing this bus service and seventy-seven at the Edison level. At the elementary level, we have three buses. We have an east bus, a west bus, and then a center uptown bus. And Edison, we have an east and a west. So Minnesota is the dividing line between. We do have the option of PM stops in the neighborhood. When we first started this back in two thousand and twelve, we had, we allowed families to request their neighborhood stop. And at the end of the day, we had a lot of concern about the length of time the routes were. So we switched it to just school stops, but then they have the option in April of each year to request neighborhood stop. There's certain criteria and we'll, I'll show you that. There's criteria for more in the neighborhood need to request a stop, that kind of stuff. And then I assembled that list and we make, we give that information to our contractor. He routes it to make sure that it stays at as close to an hour as possible. And then we approve the stops at that point in time. So right now, the month of May, we have registration open for the first semester and then we will open again in August. We have some families that don't get accepted to the program until the summer months. And so we open it up for one week in August for everybody. At that point in time, though, there's late fees that will apply to anybody that's already been in the program. We don't charge late fees to the families that are just coming in, but the families that have been there, there's a ten percent late fee that they'll have to pay. And then finally, for our second semester, we do it typically two weeks in December. Depending on what the calendar is each year, it could be as early as November, end of November that we would do the registration for that.
What's the longest ride time for?
The last one, so we have at Edison, they leave school about, I think it's three fifty-six. Hawthorne, excuse me, Hayward is the last one at five oh five. So it's just a little bit over an hour.
And what is the full price fee on this?
The full price on that is a hundred and fifty dollars if you're doing both morning and afternoon. If you're just doing one, it's seventy-five.
Per semester?
Mm-hmm. And then we have the free and reduced rates as well. The free is...
Fifty is what?
Yeah. I don't think you're going to be able to see this real low, but I will send this information to you. The free is fifty and the reduced is a hundred dollars one way. Excuse me, round trip.
Per semester.
Per semester, yeah. And then this is just an example of what we send out to the schools and the schools will send out this brochure to our families so they can go in and do the registration. We use Google Docs and PayPal. And then this is just an example of the middle school brochure. The other thing that we have are the extracurricular activity trips. That includes athletics, fine arts, or field trips. That's about four thousand trips a year that school busing will do for us. And then the other thing that we will do is the music rotational travel. There's typically three a year. So we might have band, orchestra, you know, we'll have choir. They'll end up going New York City, I think this year we've had a band group that went to Savannah, Georgia. And it's typically an overnight. What we do is an RFP process, request for proposal process, and we'll work with travel agencies and they'll supply their quotes to us and we'll evaluate it with, typically it's with the director, with Lloyd, and then my transfer, or travel specialist, and then myself. We'll all review the proposals and then make recommendations to the board. In two thousand and fifteen, with help of Ben and Dan, we created a Bus School Smart Campaign. We wanted to do something, we were seeing a lot of concerns with bus incident reports that were coming to us, bus behavior. And so we wanted to provide a way that would kind of bring behavior issues to the forefront, but also we utilized this Bus School Smart Campaign to bring awareness to our community when the buses are out on the road, what the expectation is for the drivers around school buses. We have seen, because of not only this, but I think our schools promoting it with putting it in their newsletters, we have PSAs, we've seen a thirty-two percent decrease in our bus incident reports from this time a year ago. So, and it was a decrease a year ago we saw from when we first started this. So it's working, we've got a ways to go, but I think it's been positive. And I think it's, you know, we had calls in our department letting us know, you know, this carment passed and the stop arm was up, you know, there's questions, what are we supposed to do if a school bus is parked and the stop arm is out? So, you know, Ben has done a great job, Dan did a great job. I think, Dan, didn't you have your daughter help do the PSA? So just educating our community and our students on proper behavior on the bus and then around the bus as well keeps our students safe. We have Yellow Cab. We work with them when it's more economical, more efficient to transport our students to school. This will happen if, for example, we have homeless education. If a student moves from, say they move from Patrick Henry's boundary over to Memorial's boundary. We will still transport them to Patrick Henry and so we don't have a bus that's going there, so we use Yellow Cab to transport them. We also have, during the day, we'll have students that go from Washington High School over to Axdel or from Axdel to Washington High School. We use Yellow Cab at that time as well. It's about a hundred students a day that we're transporting. This also includes the accelerated learning program. So if you have kids that are in Patrick Henry and they go to Lincoln, we'll transport them during the day to Lincoln as well. All right, on to the budget. School busing. This year will be about seven point eight million dollars. That includes special education, regular education, it includes our field trips, and then Yellow Cab is about two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So it's a pretty substantial budget, but it's also very crucial to make sure that our kids are getting to and from school each day. Right now, Todd and I are in contract negotiations with School Bus Inc. for the rates for next year. We do negotiations with them every year. And then Yellow Cab, we will start on those negotiations probably in June for the following year as well. Finally, we, our goal is to make sure that our students get to school safely every single day. And it's important that we have communication with our contractors, with our parents, with our schools. And that includes if for some reason we have a delay, the bus is, has mechanical issues, has an accident, weather related, we want to be able to communicate with our schools and with our families to let them know that there could be a delay. And we're always researching methods to improve transportation. You know, we've looked at, do we look at GPS and student tracking? Is that something that, you know, does the cost or the benefit, does the benefit outweigh the cost? You know, those are all things that we look at each year, which is why we came up with the School Bus Smart Campaign. We wanted to find ways to improve on student behavior on the bus and safety around the bus. Questions?
Yeah. Do we know how many students at each of the high schools are using the tripper programs?
Yes, there's about four hundred and twenty-five students. Three hundred use the tripper and about a hundred and twenty-five or so use the pusher.
Has there been a push at all?
By high school to look into traditional bus routes versus the, using the city bus routes to pick up students based on attendance?
There are questions around that.
That's part of the reason why, when we did these tripper buses a couple of years ago and we took them over from the city, we worked with the social workers liaisons in the schools and said, okay, where are our pockets of students? That we need to concentrate on making stops in those areas to make sure that they're getting to school. So that was one thing that we did with our tripper routes to make sure that we were accommodating those students. Typically, it's, you're going to see on the routes, it may be by apartment complexes, you know, it's going to be a little bit of a distance from the school. But we did work with the schools almost to determine the stops.
When you talked about the subsidizing, was that just for the specialized education amount or was that the entire?
We subsidize for the specialized, it's about seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
For the tripper buses, we pay for, we probably pay the majority of the cost for the tripper buses. I don't have that exact number, but I can get that for you.
And then how about like the elementary and middle school traditional bus routes?
Do we subsidize about seventy-five percent? A hundred percent of that?
I think one tool that is online that people sometimes forget about is you can go on to the website and type in your address and it will tell you if you are in a bus zone. And I handed out bus passes at Edison one year at the beginning of school year and people would come up and I knew it, so I had it on my phone and it was so convenient because people like, well, I don't, I live so far away. Well, you're too close, you know, and so it's a nice, very handy tool for people if you move or if your kid's going to middle school next year and you wonder like, you know, do I qualify for something? So I just want to throw that out there too.
Our Realtors use it quite often.
Sure.
They'll, and if they can't find a, you know, an address, they may call us and we'll say, you know, that's actually in Lenox. We have, on the west side of town, we have Katy Avenue and on the west side, Katy Avenue is Lenox and on the east side is Soufar, so.
It's good for that purpose too.
Yeah, yeah. So we do get a lot of calls from Realtors asking those questions.
I know that Georgetown, McGovern has maybe granted funds to do busing for, like say a student wants to stay for after-school activities. Do any of other, our schools, like elementary wouldn't need that probably, but any of our other middle schools have a need for that? Whittier does as well.
Yeah.
And do you handle that as well? Is that through?
Yeah, it would all go through, it goes through our contractor on school busing, but they will work with the Y on those routes.
Okay.
A month ago, at our city-county schools, Wednesday morning thing, we had the city do a presentation on road projects and Twenty-S sixth and Southeastern, I know, is going to be huge. And I remember probably almost four years ago that we started having conversation between the district and School Bus Inc. on what we were going to do to get the Horseman, Rosa Parks, just that whole area. Have you got that all sort of ironed out or?
Time, right time is down and all of that, that's probably all been worked out.
Was that before Horseman was the, all bridges?
Well, yeah, we moved that, the Horseman walk area now gets bussed out to Rosa Parks because Rosa Parks is going to get emptied out.
Right.
So I can't remember if there's a, Cameron, the name is, is it Ninth Street or is that the street? It's going to be there all the time.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Yeah.
That's kind of a sneaky little street. Be across there.
Don't advertise it.
I think that was the plan is to use Eighteenth because that's right, they'll just kind of bus, work south to north.
Right, go that way in the area.
For two years, the GMS wants to turn, it's going to be a tremendous improvement, but... Cameras only on some buses. Is that School Bus Inc.'s?
Yeah, they have the ability to move the cameras around. And what they will do is if there's buses that have issues, behavior issues, that kind of stuff, they will, if there's not a camera on there, they will move the camera to that bus. But they don't have cameras on every single bus. Now, if you ask Mike Moore, there's a camera on every single seat.
I thought, you know, that's just a budget, if we wanted to, we would just have to budget it.
Same question I was thinking of.
Yeah.
That we do budget thirty-two hundred dollars a year to pay for two cameras, but that's typically, what they're doing is rotating, taking out the old and replacing.
Do you, and you may not track this, but when you look at behavior incidents on buses, does it decrease if there's a camera on the bus enough to justify cost or is the staff member on the bus? I mean, that obviously makes a huge difference, but...
Do the students even know that there is a camera? Like is it obvious? They don't, okay.
I haven't tracked that, but that's a good question.
Oh.
Say that again?
Sometimes they get to see what they do.
Yes, yes, sometimes they do.
Those that need to know now, is what I should say.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I have not, I have not tracked that, but that's something we've been trying to.
to do.
Just curious. Okay, any other questions for?
Good information. Thank you.
Sorry, there's a lot of information there.
No, it's very helpful.
Very good.
All right.
Okay. Else to come before the group. If not, we are adjourned. Thank you all.